Thank you. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, October 14, 2025, commencing at 7:03 PM. All council members are in attendance. There are four items on the agenda tonight: City of Redmond 2026 Legislative Agenda, Adoption of the 2025-2050 Fire Department Functional Plan, Capital Investment Program Project Updates for Q3 2025, and Council Talk Time. The first item is the City of Redmond 2026 State Legislative Agenda, and Amy Tsai, Chief Policy Officer, will introduce the item.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Council. So Amy Tsai, Chief Policy Advisor, and with me online, I have Amina Tiore. She is part of the stellar team that Brianna Murray has for Gordon Thomas Honeywell. We are very well represented at the state legislature with their team, so really pleased that she's able to join us today. Brianna is out, and so she is pinch-hitting, hopefully with as much success as the Mariners have had with their pinch-hitting. So I'm going to go ahead and start. Amina's going to kick us off with a brief overview of the upcoming legislative session, and then I will go over the most recent changes to the state legislative agenda draft that you all saw, and then we'll take that opportunity for feedback and discussion. So Amina, if you would like to lead us off with that?
Of course. Thank you, Amy. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You all may previously know me as Amina Abdullah. I am now Amina Tiore, as Amy indicated. I got married this summer. So it's great to be here with you guys today. I'm going to provide a really brief recap of the legislative session, and then I'll pass it on to Amy to go over the city's legislative agenda. But just really quickly, the 2026 Legislative Session will begin on the second Monday of January, so we're looking at January 12 of 2026. As a reminder, the legislature operates on a two-year cycle, and the 2026 session will be the second year of that cycle. And as a result, it is scheduled to be a short 60-day session. This year, there isn't really a major legislative election, so the political makeup of the legislature is going to be about the same as last session. So Democrats will continue to control both chambers. As a second year of the biennium, all bills introduced in 2025 that did not pass into law will automatically carry over and remain under consideration in 2026. And additionally, one of the biggest components of the 2026 session is that the legislature will make adjustments to the biennial budgets adopted last session, which governs spending from January 1 of 2025 through June 30 of 2027. During the 2026 session, legislators will modify these budgets to account for changing revenue collections and pragmatic priorities. In the last Economic Revenue Forecast Meeting in September, we learned that the legislature has collected less revenue than expected, meaning they will face significant deficit in the operating budget during the mid-biennial adjustments. After the short 60-day session, all members of the House of Representatives and half of the Senate will be up for reelection. Traditionally, this means that in short legislative sessions, the legislature shies away from controversial issues that will go into effect/ become law while they're simultaneously campaigning for office. And as the general rule of thumb, short legislative sessions tend to have less controversial issues and tend to focus on making adjustments to policies that were enacted in the first year of the biennium. With that, I will pass it back to Amy to go over your 2026 draft legislative agenda.
Great. Thank you, Amina. So to recap that, there's less money, it's a short session, and times are going to be really tough and tight. So I have a screen share of your agenda packet, speaking to page seven, and I'm going to walk you through the changes since the Committee of the whole meeting on September 9th, and this was in response to your terrific feedback. So again, thank you so much for having your guidance and your policy direction that I hope is manifesting in the latest iteration of this draft. So the front page is not in track changes because it changed extensively in response to your feedback. And so I'll go over those, and then the rest of the pages will show actual track changes. At the beginning, just highlighting in the vision, this is a simple statement identifying who we are, how big we are, and really establishing what kind of a city we are, and really appreciate Councilmember Anderson there for flagging that we can call it a majority multicultural city as a better term for how to describe our diverse population. So I really appreciate that. On the legislative requests, we removed the drone ask per your comments and feedback there, and instead, we have increased the Hartman Park Playground ask to 500,000. And as I mentioned, it's a tight session, and so it's not, you know, we just have to keep expectations realistic, but at the same time, you know, if you don't ask, you can't receive. And so that is our one monetary ask for the short session, so we'll be focusing our attention primarily on that. I will cover the first paragraph in a bit. I'm just going to go over the asks first. So that changes 500,000. The Maintenance and Operations Center still remains the same on that front page, and as a reminder, that is just to socialize them to the great need that is coming, so it doesn't have a monetary ask this session. But we will be using this session as an opportunity to talk it up and get them more familiar with its needs and sell it. So the first paragraph, I think potentially the most important change on this front page in response to your feedback, is really elevating and highlighting how the state is intersecting with federal activities, the things that are happening, the pressures that are facing our community, and you really wanted to highlight the impact on community. And so some of the themes that are coming up in this first paragraph, calling out the social service net and how at risk that may be and how that will make times that are tight. Also recognizing the importance of protecting civil rights, highlighting that we have a strong immigrant, refugee, asylum seeker priority, and also the issues coming up with SNAP and Medicaid eligibility. And so these are just generally the pressures that social service safety net is going to be facing and the challenges, and so elevating that in this time, we're all coming together to support the community and our neighbors. And so that is the first statement that takes priority for this short session. If there's no comments or questions, I'm going to move on to the specific changes. So turning to the second page. There's just a little fine-tuning on transportation infrastructure funding. That's just being a more direct statement there. In terms of the innovative technology, oh, also, in particular, just, I'm going to generically call it a thank you to all of you for your feedback, and Councilmember Stewart and Council President Kritzler in particular had specific edits and changes that we were working through. And so just thank you to all of you for those. And so on the technology, sorry, let me say that correctly, technology implementation, instead of talking about just simply developing policies, trying to make a stronger statement that when you're talking about technology, we actually need some common standards. And so it's talking about the building of standards, so strengthening that language, but still noting that that original language is about consulting the expertise of local government, that really what we're seeking here is city voice in that framing. Also adding in data privacy, that was a strong interest that you all had at the last committee of the whole meeting, and so calling that out specifically. Turning to the next page. So housing, the changes here are several. One is to emphasize the stability, mobility for families, so keeping it family-centered is part of that change. And also the need to continue refining the tenant protection laws that were of great interest to you all last session, recognizing, I think you said in previous sessions, that there's more work needed to be done there. And then also emphasizing that it is not just that we're lifting up vulnerable populations, but we're providing stability for residents. And so it is the framing and the emphasis, again, focusing on community and lifting up those kinds of priorities and highlighting your interest in the tenant protection laws. So those are the main changes in that section. Also, with adequate, the very last sentence there, not just adequate funding and time, but highlighting that it's actually tools that we need to accomplish that. Moving on to the next section, environmental sustainability. This adds two items. One, the restoration permit, the streamlining of restoration permits, and that is a RIAA eight priority area. And so with our strong environmental focus, we added it there. And you all had expressed some interest in calling out the Climate Commitment Act, and so this is just calling it out specifically, that we do hope that is preserved. As you all know from last session, we had some funding coming through that, and also its general benefit to our environment. Also, community vitality. Many of these edits were, you all wanted things added. I really wanted it to stay to one page. So some of these are just wordsmithing, shrinking down things that didn't detract from the substance. So the federal actions was highlighted and expanded on the front page, so that's just going away just because I really needed, I really wanted that line back. And then you had also had interest in access to reproductive and gender-affirming health care, so I'll call it that one, that that is a notable add there. And really, truly, the rest of these were cosmetically designed to make it as short as possible. Just taking one more quick peek to make sure that I'm not missing anything that was added. And then under Public Safety and Criminal Justice, the last thing is to change gun safety to gun violence prevention. And I think that is consistent with the focus of this council at this time. So those are the changes in response to your feedback, so happy to take any questions, comments that you have.
Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Amy and Amina. Congratulations. And I really appreciate the work to integrate so much feedback since we've seen this last time. It's actually been updated quite a bit, and including that major change on the first page, which I have had an opportunity to kind of forecast that this was in our latest draft with community-based organizations here in Redmond, to their great appreciation. So there is a lot of support behind this. One of the questions I had regarding the housing issues, the two housing areas, rather, is that at one time, a regional coalition for housing was adding some staffing positions and maybe was one day going to have a legislative agenda. I wonder if you know if they have a legislative agenda this year, and if so, if those goals have alignment with ours and legislative agendas.
That's a great question, councilmember. They do have an agenda, and it does align with ours. And so when they were coming up with their agenda, they actually took our feedback and other cities' feedback, and so there was alignment happening as they were crafting theirs. And then also, a lot of our agenda had actually come from some of their priorities originally, you know, and their work around the REITs and so forth. So their current agenda, I just have too much paper. That is me fiddling with lots of paper. Their current agenda is longer than ours, but it is consistent. And so I actually took a specific look at that, and I think ours, there is a subsumed under ours, because ours is pretty general, and theirs gets into more detail. So I think with this agenda in general, the approach is wait and see how they manifest, but it's got the flexibility in there to be absolutely consistent with Arch. Oh, look, here, finally, now that I'm already done talking, here is their agenda. So they have, Arch Priority 1 is increased funding for affordable housing at the state and local levels. There's a couple As and Bs there regarding local options, encouraging state investments, expanding the state sales tax credit, so it's a lot more detailed. Arch 2, Priority 2, continue to reduce barriers and support local efforts to build more affordable housing faster. You can see that theme reflected in ours. They've got more specifics around that. Establish development and tax incentives, support other policies such as expanding access to land, or such as surplus property policies. And then they have general policy provisions, supporting continued state assistance, maintaining existing affordable housing stock.
Thank you so much for that very detailed answer. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Amy, the wordsmithing that you did was phenomenal. Thank you. My question is around Hartman Park Playground and whether it would be more appropriate to discuss how it's actually a regional resource? Yes, of course, it's our park. Many people end up coming to Hartman Park for various reasons, whether it's cross-country meets, that can be quite large, as well as Red West and Little League and baseball, and, you know, families from all around come and utilize that park and the importance of, yes, it is a Redmond asset, but it's a larger community resource. So I don't know if that would be appropriate in here, and forgive me for not bringing this question to you sooner, or if that is more in conversation.
Up to you all, but I would suggest both. One thing we're going to do is have one-pagers, and so we can talk about the framing of those one-pagers that we hand out with the agenda, and that can highlight the use and the widespread use. It would also be relatively easy, if you all wanted, to make a slight edit. This part contains, right now it reads, this part contains, let me just scroll up there. I actually forgot I was still screen sharing. So where it says this part contains seven ballfields, soccer field, et cetera, you could say this part contains regional amenities, including, right? And so then you've highlighted that, because that is what they're coming for primarily. So this hasn't regional amenities, so it's got the word region in there. And then we have the one-page where we can highlight that regional aspect of how it draws in not just a lot of Redmond residents, but others coming from afar also.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I don't see any issues with that edit, so yes.
Would you all like to do a thumbs up historically?
Would you do thumbs on the edit for that? Thumbs up in favor? Yep. We're good for that edit. Thank you. Council President Kritzler?
Thank you so much. I mostly just wanted to say thank you for the work on this. I really love this updated agenda, and especially the priorities on the first page, I think really hit well in terms of, you know, first putting forward the priorities that we're going to see of the really important work and weighty decisions the legislature will have to make for communities all across the state, but weighing in for our community, saying we really want you to support this work for our vulnerable neighbors, I think. And then having something that's really tangible for our community in the center, and then something that's forward-looking, just makes a lot of sense to me as a right-sized agenda. Also appreciate you taking several of my edits on the second and third pages, and glad to see the wording as that shows up there. The only suggestion I was going to make following up on Councilmember Stewart's question was whether, on the item where we list the agendas that we do concur with, whether we would want to just actually add active support for Arch's agenda if we actually align completely with that. An apologies if that's what Councilmember Stewart asked.
I will poll everyone and ask if we would want to add a support line for Arch. Give a thumbs up if we want to add support line for the Arch agenda. Seeing all thumbs all around. Minus one, maybe?
If you can fit the wording in there without making it long.
Can do.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the legislative agenda? Councilmember Fields?
So I'm good with all this. But, you know, we are in a dynamic situation with the enforcement of federal policies that conflict with our own laws. And it's a dynamic situation. It's evolving, changing almost daily. Will there be an opportunity to update, if it's necessary, say, early in the year, January, February, to update what we believe as a city that the state needs to do to protect civil liberties at the local level? Will there be a place where we can then insert a very strong opinion that the state and local governments are not doing enough to protect people? Specifically, when we were at the ESTERA public outreach, a question was asked to Council President and I, can we be assured that the City of Redmond will actually protect us if, in fact, our friends, neighbors, children are being kidnapped without identification, without any kind of court order, without anything? And we didn't have an answer. So, and now with the fraud of pretending to be federal Asians, even more so. So I think the state has to weigh in on how our law enforcement will act or react to those situations where people are actually being taken off the streets.
I think several things. One, I think if things reach a level of seriousness that is a call to action universally for everyone, I think you would see the political climate, they would coalesce and they would mobilize. And I think the act of doing so is going to create those opportunities that you would be reacting to and weighing, deciding how you want to weigh in. So there's both what you do as a city, and there's what you do in reaction to whatever is going on at the state level. So there might be a task force, there might be a work group, there might be statements, there might be press, you know. So who knows what form it might take, because it's a pretty, at least in this moment, it's a very abstract concept that I'm not quite clear on where it would show up and manifest. If you're talking about the state legislative agenda in particular, I think in general, the goal is that the agenda today is broad enough to reflect the values of where you want to be. And so I would recommend that if there is something where you find a need to act and a path for acting, that the agenda itself serves a very specific purpose for advancing your, and I appreciate that the situation we're talking about is a priority, right? But in general, these are the priorities of the bills that are coming up and the funding requests. And in that sense, it's largely, it's an every-year kind of thing, and the thing that you're talking about is maybe a once-in-a-lifetime kind of moment where the things you react to, I just personally don't necessarily see the state agenda being the vehicle, because I think it's more of, this is a guiding document, not an, it's a guide for action, but you're talking about action in and of itself, of what you might want to do in that situation. So I don't know if that helps. That's just my general first reaction.
I hear your answer, and I guess, you know, this question was brought up at the beginning of the year, and I'm not sure we still have an answer. And what I recall is there were council members who said, well, what's the state going to do? So we still don't know. And I guess my concern is, who decides when the Rubicon has been crossed? Who decides when action is necessary? There are some people who think action, or at least a plan for action, should be here already. So I get what you said. I understand this vehicle, this mechanism. I still think we're leaving a giant hole in our understanding of what we should do and how we can coordinate with other jurisdictions.
Thank you. In response to that, I do think that we, as a council, have the opportunity to draft some sort of statement that if we wanted to potentially include when we send our legislative agenda, or when that moment comes that we know it's the tipping point, I think that we, as a council, should take that action and take that step and coalesce around what that message is and potentially try to get our neighboring cities on board as well. So I think that that's an avenue we should take when that moment comes, and I would encourage us all to be paying attention and make sure that we are being nimble enough to react in that moment. I will jump to my question now. On the innovative technology implementation, including autonomous vehicles, I was curious about the, and I apologize, I didn't get to ask you this before tonight. I was curious why the autonomous vehicle is in the headline versus AI, because we, as a city and as a council, have been focusing a lot on AI and less so on the autonomous vehicles. So what am I missing here?
I think that's a good question, and they're both called out in the subtext. The reason autonomous vehicles is there is, it's been part just the simple practical fact that autonomous vehicles are coming. There's going to be funding that is going to be available, and implementation is imminent. And the question is, in this moment of implementation, what are the regulations going to look like? And so that's really a state and/or local conversation. And so in that sense, it's a little bit that AI has actually been here for a long time, even though it's really going in leaps and bounds right in this moment. But autonomous vehicles is kind of like the road usage charger. At a moment in time where these conversations are starting to be had, and so it's just highlighting that this is a particular issue that will need to be dealt with.
I would question if we could include, I know that title is very long, if we could just include AI and then an ampersand autonomous vehicles, to include both, because I think we're weighting it very heavily on the autonomous vehicles. And I want to make sure that we are encouraging more emphasis on AI policy, because, let's face it, there's not currently enough and good AI policy at the state level or at the local level.
And so that would be in the title, Innovative Technology Implementation, Including Artificial Intelligence and Autonomous Vehicles.
If you need to shorten it, you could say AI.
It would be okay.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of blank space.
Okay.
And now I've identified my secret priority for this agenda is space.
Do you need thumbs on that modification? Can we get thumbs on that? Great. Thank you. Any other, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. Just on this particular body of text, something that I've communicated with Amy and Brianna after having conversation in community and also hearing from state legislators that there is legislation in the works and hopefully will come to fruition this year. You know, we were the first city in the state to pilot the use of drones as a first responder, and we're learning a lot from this program. This council has been very attentive to data governance, and we do have our data governance project and policy set to come back to us later this year, I think. This is an area, in my mind, that makes perfect sense for the state to develop a statewide standard on the data governance so that we can hold the vendors accountable. So on balance, just on this item, this is a, this gets to the heart of an issue that I've been having a lot of conversation with in community. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on the legislative agenda? All right. Seeing none. Do you have what you need from us?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much. And we will move on to our second item on the agenda, the adoption of the 2025-2050 Redmond Fire Department Functional Plan.
My apologies.
Oh, backing up.
Madam Chair, my apologies. Sorry, Chief. I'll buy you a coffee. I forgot, I do need direction in terms of when this comes back. And so in terms of the consent calendar, it could be, these changes are very simple. It could be in front of your, on your calendar as soon as October 21st, if that works for you.
October 21st for consent. Thumbs? Fabulous.
All right. Thanks.
My apologies as well. I should have thought that.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Not at all. All right. Continuing on with my introduction of Chief Shepherd introducing the Redmond Fire Functional Development Plan.
All right. Well, good evening, Council. Fire Chief Adrian Shepherd. And tonight we come before you to present the Fire Functional Plan. This critical infrastructure roadmap addresses service gaps, provides an update on where we are with impact fees to reflect actual cost, and provides a clear financial path forward. The plan connects our facilities, fleet, and equipment needs with the investment strategies to deliver them. With me this evening is Deputy Fire Chief Ami Quiriconi to walk us through the plan.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmembers. And again, as Chief introduced me, I'm Ami Quiriconi, Deputy Fire Chief. And as he mentioned, I'm presenting the 2025 through 2050 Fire Department Functional Plan. Again, this is a long range capital plan that ensures our fire systems keep pace with all of Redmond's growth, risk environment, and community expectations. It's the first time that we've actually had a plan of this scope that aligns with the Redmond 2050 and enables us to update our fire impact fees. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide council with an overview of the plan, gather your feedback ahead of the business meeting on November 3rd, where ideally we'll return for a formal adoption at that time. So tonight, we're going to cover three main points. One is an overview of the plan and why it's needed. Two is the capital investment strategy and the key projects we've identified. And then third, how the plan aligns with citywide fiscal planning and implementation. And before I advance to the next slide, I want to give a shout out to Jeff Churchill and Glenn Coyle of the Planning Department. They have been magnificent in assisting all along the way. Have been working on this for over a year, and they've been crucial to that. And I'd also like to thank Director Hamilton from Parks last year for saying, hey, y'all should work on your functional plan. It would be really valuable. And Cameron Zapata, who helped us stay coordinated with Makers, who's the group that you all have met with the Government Facilities Plan. So they deserve a lot of credit for being able to get us to this point. All right. So the story behind the need. First of all, the fire system is made up of three core components. That's its buildings, the people, as well as the equipment. And as I'm sure you all have probably could be aware of, as over time, it's been under increasing strain as Redmond has evolved into the magnificent city that it is right now and continues to grow. Many of our fire stations, as you probably have seen in the plan, are aging. And also, you've seen the facilities condition assessments that have been brought before council previously. They were not built at that time to support today's staffing levels, the type of apparatus we need now to support this type of a city and any of the operational needs that have evolved as Redmond has changed its nature and scope. Our personnel today are working in facilities that don't meet modern standards for health, safety, and inclusion, things like something as simple as gender inclusive bathrooms each of the stations, and then decontamination zones to allow firefighters at internal health and safety, as well as adequate sleeping quarters. So our equipment as well has to evolve to meet the new and emerging risks, such as wildfires out in the wildland urban interface, electric vehicle fires, which are becoming more frequent, and then as well, vertical rescue with mid and high-rise buildings, as well as the introduction of rail to our community and elevated rail. So this plan has gone through and told that story. It documents where the system is falling behind and lays out a clear faced path to modernizing our infrastructure and ensuring we can continue delivering high-quality emergency services as Redmond continues to grow. So an overview, the Fire Functional Plan is a long range capital planning document that guides investments in fire stations, apparatus, and support infrastructure through the 2050 horizon. It aligns with the Redmond 2050 Plan, the Growth Management Act, and the city's capital investment strategy. The goal of adopting this plan is to establish a fiscally responsible, impact fee eligible capital strategy that ensures Redmond's fire system remains resilient, equitable, and responsive as the city grows. And so why now? Well, for one, as you know, throughout the city, we're undergoing the entire capital investment strategy and updating the general, the Government Facilities Plan. But really importantly, our impact fees are significantly outdated in the city, and they can't be updated or even used until we actually have a Fire Functional Plan adopted. And so this plan is a legal and policy foundation required in order for us to be able to take the next step in modernizing those fees. And second, as I've mentioned, the city is currently undertaking a broader capital improvement planning effort. And with the Redmond 2050 Comp Plan now being adopted last year by council, this plan will ensure that the Fire Department is aligned with that citywide infrastructure, priorities, funding strategies, and long-term growth projections. So a bit of the background on how we developed this plan. First of all, it builds off of the 2027 Community Risk Assessment and Standards of Cover that the Fire Department did back in 2022, as well as the department's 2022 to 27 Strategic Planning. That was a lot of the efforts that Chief Shepherd started right away when he joined the City of Redmond, and we brought in Mike Dispain, a consultant that's been working with the city for a few years. It was also developed through the Facility Conditions Assessment that you all have had a chance to be able to see that was commissioned by the Parks team. And then it includes all the detailed operational analysis from our team and community input from the strategic planning process. It's also intended to reflect Redmond's values, which are equity, sustainability, and resilience, and integrate those with the 2050 and capital investment strategy. So the capital investment strategy itself, we have a phased roadmap in the plan, and it goes through 2050 and then even a little bit beyond the 2050 horizon. And so some of the key projects that are in the plan that you may have read are Station 11. We put that at the top of the list of needing that to be remodeled or rebuilt through some massive renovation process with a potential relocation out past the 2050 horizon. We've identified Station 12, which we've talked about before, relocation into the city limits, but also it needs to be able to be increased in size from its current configuration in order to reflect the growth down in the neighborhoods that it serves. We've identified that Station 16 is going to undergo a lifecycle renovation at some point in the future. So we want to make sure our functional plan actually plans for those type of work so we never see a continual degradation of our stations. So we're looking to plan that out. We've included that Station 17, when it was constructed, wasn't actually completed all the way on the interior. And so we've identified that as a project. And then in the plan, you'll notice that there's a Station 19, which is if we find that our level of service starts to degrade, we will have to look at a reconfiguration of our downtown stations. That would mean moving Station 11 and building an additional station down here. We also identified through our plan and our process of it that we're in need of a logistics warehouse facility and some training spaces. We also need investments in new apparatus, such as the tractor drawn aerial trucks that are able to navigate through the changing roadway conditions, but also then serve the high-rise rescues and the rail, elevated rail rescues. And then we've also identified in the plan, as you probably saw in the phased part, where at some point in time in the future, we'll actually need to add an engine at a station, and we'll have to add an aid car in it in order to be able to meet the growth changes that are predicted through 2050. Now, the fiscal strategy, the total projected investment is $83 million through the 2050 horizon with an additional $70 million identified beyond that. And that $70 million is primarily the two additional fire stations. By working directly with our partners in finance, we have come up with a plan that you'll see in there, the 27 through 32 Plan, that introduces a diversified funding strategy, being a combination of those impact fees once we're able to get them updated, general fund, grants, levies, and bonds. And the rumor I've heard, and maybe somebody can confirm this, is this is actually the first fire capital plan that we've actually had that meets this impact fee eligibility since about 1991. And the Growth Management Act, as you know, was adopted in 1990. So this plan is really a key tool in unlocking some revenue potentials for us to be able to get ahead, or at least caught up on some of the strain that we've experienced. So level of service and readiness. Our system is under pressure from the vertical development that's happened, the concurrency and the aging infrastructure. This happens to all communities like ours that undergo this, you know, tremendous metamorphosis. So this plan addresses those challenges through potential station citing if level of service continues to fall below something that's acceptable to council and the community. It addresses staffing capacity, when we need to bring in additional staff and additional units to respond to the increase in growth. And then it also addresses our apparatus readiness with a plan of when we need to buy new apparatus and when we need to phase them and put them into reserve. This also ensures some compliance with seismic standards, ADA accessibility, and energy performance requirements so that we can continue to maintain reliable service as the city grows. From the equity, sustainability, and resilience standpoint, equity is embedded in the plan through, again, inclusive facility design. As you know, our workforce is very different than what it was in the 80s when some of our stations were built. So we want to make sure that we can get that remedied and rectified as soon as possible. And we also wanted to verify that we are serving all areas of Redmond equally, including underserved, or not underserved areas, but vulnerable areas. Sustainability is also addressed through the plan, as you know, as noted in the last presentation. As we all know, we have our EV Fire Engine, first one in the state of Washington. We also are identifying that new facilities will be lead aligned. That puts us in alignment with, again, ESAP and with the city's policies and procedures for that. And then resilience is supported by, again, communicating that fire stations are essential facilities, held in the same regard as hospitals, and require resilient backup power systems. They need to be ready for all kinds of hazards and emergencies. And then we also integrated the opportunity to actually use fire stations as community resilience hubs. If we're going to be building these fire stations and hardening them to a state where they're actually suitable in all hazards, why not provide an opportunity for the community to be able to use them as caches, especially in a downtown high-rise environment? On the community outreach for the development of this, again, this reflects input from community members, stakeholders, and internal staff. So through the surveys and stakeholder sessions and public safety events, as you know, we were also at the Planning Commission this summer, gave us an opportunity to provide feedback from them on monitoring and accountability of our project delivery, funding stability, and our reliance on impact fees. They provided input on planning for future density and vertical growth. We talked about sustainability standards, and we talked about our coordination with other city plans, including the water infrastructure plans. So FIRE responded to each of those items, and several clarifications were included in the Planning Commission Recommendations Report, which is included in your council package. But that review process, as well as the constant communications that we've been in with internal staff, have helped strengthen the transparency, the fiscal realism, and the cross-departmental alignment of our plan. So for implementation and monitoring, the plan uses an adaptive phasing strategy. We take a look at near, mid, and long-term horizon so that we have an opportunity to remain flexible as conditions evolve. We're only as accurate as the information we have today, so we know plans change. And implementation is going to be further guided by Redmond's Capital Improvement Program and governance structure. So now that we actually have the plan written, we're actually able to fold it into the citywide planning process so that there is a level of accountability that's bought in or kind of built into that process there. And as we indicated in our plan, FIRE leadership is owning its part and the responsibility in terms of being able to make it a priority for participating in these processes, prioritizing that work, and then ensuring that we're doing the right and proper performance tracking so that we're always in align with our service outcomes and we can hold ourselves accountable as a department. So what's next? This plan is more than just the roadmap. Again, it's a critical enabler for the city's ability to fund and deliver fire services that meet the needs of a growing Redmond. First, it allows us to update our fire impact fees for the first time in many years. The current fees are outdated and fall far short of covering the true cost of growth-related impacts to the Fire Department. So without this plan, we cannot legally update or use those fees. Second, this plan actually sets the stage for the upcoming General Government Facilities Plan, which you already had a preview of at your September 23rd council meeting. That plan aligns our needs with the broader infrastructure investments across all departments. And so this functional plan ensures that we're ready to integrate those needs into the larger strategy across the city. So our recommendation tonight is to adopt the 2025 through 2050 Fire Department Functional Plan by reference into the Redmond 2050 Capital Facilities element. And ideally, the next step would be to bring this forward for formal adoption on November 3rd, consent agenda at the business meeting. And so at that point, Chief and I are available for any questions and discussion that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions from council? Councilmember Fields?
Is there a relationship between the MOC and this plan? I mean, we're still developing the scope of the MOC. So is there an impact of how we end up scoping and building the MOC to what you need? And also, is there an impact on what you need to how we build the MOC?
Yep. There actually is. So there's a mention in there, again, of our, again, a need for our logistics warehousing. Our shop and apparatus area actually does need to have, at some point, it's going to need to be updated. So we have included that as a part of our strategy, is that when the MOC is developed, that there's a space for fire. And in fact, we just met with Public Works this week to walk through our shop needs and gave them ideas on dimensions and, you know, what are some of the special considerations that are required for fire apparatus maintenance in the larger MOC?
And then sort of a tag along question on that is, you're, you're looking at roughly $100 million over 25 years. Is that, is that level loaded in your mind? Is that way upfront? Where are most of that, 83 million? I rounded it to 100. Is that going to be in the first five years? Or do you see that? How do you see that funding needs?
I believe in the plan under Chapter 7, we have the 27 through 32 breakdown, and it has the value of what we see is basically essentially your first five years. You guys give me a second. I can flip to that. And it looks like we have about $26.5 million is going to be in the next 27 to 32 vision blueprint, which will be the next capital investment strategy plan. Then we've got the next horizon, which is the 32 through 40 some timeline, which ends up being the remainder of that. Let's see here. I thought I had that broken here. Let me flip pages here. Yeah, I think that's going to be in Chapter 5 or 6. But no, 80 million is not all the next five years, but 26.5 million. And a bulk of that is actually surrounding the Station 11 renovation remodel. That's probably about 15 to 20 million of that.
Great.
Yep.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you so much for coming back on this item. When we had this in at our first touch, I believe it was a committee, it was the financials. That was the bulk of council's questions. I would love to work toward being ready to adopt this plan on November 3rd, but there are a couple of things that I think need to happen. So you're right, Table 11 and 12, it outlines the 27 through 32, and it shows us the breakdown of what you're recommending. What we as a council haven't had a chance to do yet is sit with the Finance Director on this and how it fits into the rest of the capital facilities plans. And you're absolutely right, these two things did kind of come in parallel. We probably should have scheduled them all on the same night for the sake of the Finance Director. But that is a conversation, I, I understand, we are coming back on the 28th to have that conversation. We didn't have that piece yet from the Finance Director when we reviewed the capital facilities plans first. So my hope is that after the 28th, we'll have a better understanding of kind of, not just demonstrating the validity of the, the funding outline for the capital facilities plan, but also that that includes this Fire Functional Plan, also that it includes the building the public saw us buy last week, and the building the public wants us to invest in really deeply, you know, currently. So we've got a kind of lot on our plates, and we need a moment to put it all together. So that's a piece that I'm not hearing happen here tonight, and I don't know if we can. But I'm hopeful by the 28th, if we can be working toward that together, I think that would be really helpful. There are also a few questions, because I know some of us sent you questions after the last touch. I didn't see like a matrix or anything added to the packet tonight. So if you have a matrix of some of our questions and answers, that could be helpful, too.
Yeah. So what I wanted to do with the presentation was, again, just kind of walk through the functional plan. And then with the questions that you have, we actually did have that, I feel like the nutty professor right now, going through all the notes. But we did go through several of those questions and prepared responses if you guys wanted to continue. Some of them were addressed in the presentation itself, but I didn't know if there was anything. Let's see here. We had, if there were any that you wanted to raise again, that weren't already answered. So these are Chief's notes here. I know you had questions about the fleet. You had questions about what the Planning Commission had actually reviewed and wanted to discuss any of those. And so I didn't know if there was any. And we got questions from you, but we didn't get any questions from anybody else. So is there anything else? Do you want to, is there something you'd like to speak about specifically? Because we're happy to talk about it.
May I continue? Well, thank you. No problem. Actually, just to air it for, for my colleagues, yes, I did hear you reference a couple. You didn't actually reference the fleet study, and that is related to your, your question, Mr. Fields. So my understanding, having also recently met with Public Works on my interest in the MOC, my understanding is that most of the recommendations of the fleet study, just to share with my colleagues, are, are going to be integrated. And that includes moving most of the fleet maintenance to the MOC and the Public Works teams. There's a couple of other issues that are still being worked out. So yes, that would need, that would require the physical space at the MOC and the budgeting of all of that, again, is my point. Like, we should prove to ourselves that we can afford all these things, or have a plan to afford all these things. The other question I asked about was the Station 12 efforts to secure The other question I asked about was the Station 12 efforts to secure a site. And we saw in the capital facilities plan that there is that one piece of sound transit surplus land. I have asked the question many times over the last few weeks, when does the, by when does the former property owner need to decide whether or not they would like to exercise their option? And no one has been able to answer that question. So if that is one that you're able to answer or you're able to bring back to us, I think that could be helpful, too. It's certainly not the only site available. It was referenced in the capital facilities plan, but not here tonight.
Yeah. And I think the update is that we have reached out, well, we haven't reached out, but the city has reached out to Sound Transit to see what they're at, and they're not at a space of being able to make their decision on their end. So as a site, a potential location for Station 12, it's still kind of in limbo at this moment with no clear direction on what they're, when they're going to be ready to do anything with it. So the plan right now is, you know, we'll see if it's available, and then if it turns out it's not, then we'll have to look for, you know, an alternative location. So. And then I'll address the fleet. You know, the functional plan is written with what we know and have right now available to us. And so we have been communicating with the Public Works team. There's a lot of elements that have to come together that haven't quite gelled up when it comes to being able to transition and combine fleets, especially as it comes to, you know, there's two different unions that operate in there, and then there's a space consideration and things like that. So those have been ongoing conversations. What the functional plan has identified is, yes, we have needs that are specific to the FIRE department that have to be addressed in some capital format. We haven't said how it has to exactly be done, because we wanted to, as it's referenced in there, have the MOC as an available space of doing it. So instead of aligning us one way before we're ahead of where we're at in terms of that implementation, it would, you know, it would just be out of time to be able to do that, or not in the right timeline to be able to do that. But from the operational standpoint, that's been something that we've been participating in and conversations on how we'd actually do that most effectively.
Thank you. Any other questions from councilmembers? Seeing Council President Kritzler online, and then Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. I'm happy to support Councilmember Stewart's request for us to wait until after we've had some of those holistic conversations to actually move to approval on this plan. One question that I have, in addition to those thoughtful questions that have already been raised, is just, can you share with us, you mentioned about Fire Station 11, and can you just share with us verbally a little bit more of the thinking around Fire Station 11? You mentioned some contingencies in which the location might have to change, but also, it's also referenced of modernizing it and doing some improvements on site. I'm just curious if you can give us a little more deep dive on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. Appreciate it. So what we know with Station 11 is, first of all, we have a tractor-drawn aerial that will be coming to the city to be able to, again, address the high-rise rescue and elevated rescue. And we also need a vehicle that does a better job at that size to be able to navigate through the downtown street corridors. What we unfortunately also know is that the current apparatus bay down at Station 11 was not designed to house a vehicle of that size, because when it was built in 1983, it was a lot of single-story mattress shops around the space. And so Phase 1 will be to go through and do a renovation of the apparatus bay so that we can actually fit the vehicle in there, and as well as also take care of, again, it's an aging, you know, building that needs to be updated from that regards. Then Phase 2 is to move to the living quarters and the headquarters section. We have been working with the Parks and Planning Department, or Parks and Public Works Department on doing a feasibility study to really lock down the costs of that, and also to see if there's any hidden things that might be, you know, under the ground or around the area that would preclude. But the intent would be is to do the feasibility study to lock in a price, and then actually then look at doing an extensive modernization on that side there. So the best plan right now is to do it in two phases. One, that we can complete sooner, again, the apparatus bay, so that when our TDA shows up in about '28, '29, the, it can be moved directly into that station, and then migrate over in the remainder to do the second half of it. We identified, again, administratively, our headquarters space is not optimally designed even. It's, it lacks the flexibility to be able to surge and grow and adapt as needed. And again, the station itself is outdated. Again, that's one of those places where we have a women's restroom located in an area where the women actually have to hang up sheets so that when somebody walks by, if they were showering, they can't see directly. So it's one of the biggest issues we have in terms of, it's not designed for an inclusive workforce there. And we want to get that corrected, as well as just, again, it's a, you know, 40-some-year-old building that just needs to be, be modernized. It's a great location downtown. As we know, it's like close to a park, it's close to downtown, it's got a visible potential, so I think it has that value and benefit. And then to the relocation part, again, this is looking ahead at level of service, you know, if, if the growth starts to make it so that it's difficult for us to arrive at the patient or at the FIRE within the timeline that we've got right now, which is six minutes, and that's not workable for council and for the community, then that's when we'd start to say, well, we need to relocate it optimally so we can bring in a second station and make sure we've got adequate cover. Does that answer the question sufficiently for the council?
Yeah, that's, that's really helpful. I really appreciate getting a little bit more of that detail from you. And I do think exploring all the options in keeping the location and upgrading the building makes a lot of sense. It is a very kind of important community space in addition to what it serves for our FIRE, and just in terms of the location. So I think it's good for us to plan out of what kind of contingencies we might have, but I am happy to see the way the plan is shaping up at the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, that discussion actually just helps a lot. I don't really have a question. I want to provide a compliment. I think when I go back eight years, when I was first on the council and Tommy Smith was the chief, he recognized the need for this type of thinking, this type of planning, this type of insight that you are bringing to us. And I think it's remarkably beneficial to everybody. The community should be proud of what the work that you've done. You should be proud of the work, I am certainly proud of the work that you've done. The one thing in my experience with multi-year, long-term projects is the one thing that gets sort of cast in stone a little too hard is the funding. And then you try to, as you've been describing, all these possibilities and contingencies and changes. And so I don't know if you feel like there's enough reserve or enough planning in the funding side for all the possibilities, but...
That's a great question. And thank you, thank you, first of all. Thank you. I appreciate that. And second to the question, you know, working with Director Cochrane about this, her level of confidence in what we've laid out, at least for the 27 through 32 plan, is, is good. And the other thing is, it's conservative. We have other options. I think there are still mechanisms on the table that aren't included in the funding of this. One of them is, we just had a meeting, Public Works, as we were talking about the MOC and potential projects with the, the state hazard mitigation team in the plan, and there may be grant available for that to be able to offset it. So we didn't want to include that in, and we talked about that at the Planning Commission, because that's not, you know, tomorrow they may go away, right? So we wanted to make sure this is a, this is a very conservative six-year plan on this. And however, we're optimistic that there may be some other ways. And again, the impact fees, we don't, we have some prediction of what the impact fee percentages will be, but when we can get those turned around and as development continues, it may end up providing greater benefit than we predict right now. But I, I believe Director Cochrane to be fiscally responsible and conservative maybe to some extent. So if she's comfortable with it, then we feel pretty good about that, too. Yeah.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. And that was, my question that was kind of in holding was, do we, do we have an idea yet of what that impact fee use could look like when we're working in our, our funding and the budget for that?
Thank you for the question. So we are, I've been using this metaphor for almost a year now, that there are several airplanes trying to land, and we're all landing them in succession, and our functional plan's landing first so that the general facilities plan can land behind us so that we can roll up. And the other plane that we're trying to land is a little one coming off to the side, which is impact fees. So following this, once this is adopted, MBS is the consultant that's helping us out with that. They're working on that right now. And so they're doing the modeling right now to start to figure out. But they needed our six-year plan, the 27 through 32, to know what they were going to be projecting off of it, and then we'll be able to get that. So probably now, at this point, at the very beginning of '26, I will be coming back with the impact fee information so that you'll, we'll have a better idea of what we should be able to expect and how much it will actually help with the strategy that we have here.
That's great news. And thank you, echoing Councilmember Fields, and what's already been said, the amount of, of collaboration that has gone on in this, going through the notes on everything and just seeing how many voices came to the table for this. So incredible job on the collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll jump in with my questions. Absolutely plus-one to all of the kudos that you all have received. This is a massive lift, and within these 200 pages, there's, there's a lot of information and a lot of work that you can tell went into this, and a lot of passion and a lot of protection for our community. So just deep appreciation for that. I know we're kind of talking right now about the financial mechanism in the 27 to 32 timeframe, and we've also been having this tangential conversation about a regional fire authority. And I believe I had asked the question of what, what potential impacts are there for this plan if that conversation further develops? Are you able to speak a little bit about the cross there?
Yep. I'll let Chief go ahead and do that one.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I appreciate the question. I think that an important consideration is that regarding the future of any type of governance that we would have as far as an RFA or with the city, that this functional plan is withstanding. And so be it here or be it in any other construct, it would remain the same. But we're not thinking about that right now because it doesn't exist. And so we want to be more than certain that we focus on what we do have in reality, and that is that we're governed here by you and by the city. So that has been our main focus. Hopefully that answers your question. Maybe I'm skipping a rock across the top, but...
You're skipping a rock across the top. But I do think it's a, it's a funding mechanism that we have that could potentially help fund this entire plan if, if it were to come to fruition. So just, just was curious to hear your, your take on, on all of it. And then one more question I had. I appreciated the Planning Commission's question on the sighting of the downtown stations in the liquefaction zone, but I, and forgive me if I missed it, it's a big document. I didn't necessarily see any particular equipment needs to combat if we have some of those liquefaction instances happen with an earthquake. Is there, what am I missing? Is there any consideration we need to have for that as well?
That's a great question. So we actually are in the process of getting our annex to the King County Hazard Mitigation Plan done, which allows us to take a look, relook back at, you know, what are the liquefaction risks? This zone down here is low to moderate, so it's really on the lower end of it. It like, it exists, but it doesn't exist where it's a high risk for us. So there isn't any special equipment that's being identified for that. But because of it being in a liquefaction zone, even at the low to moderate, it being a priority for the city, that's actually what helps us, set us up to be probably a good candidate for receipt of the hazard mitigation grants to be able to offset it. So if we identify that there are special seismic considerations in the, in the rebuilding of the station in its existing location, it's an essential facility as a FIRE station, and we've identified it in capital planning, then that actually helps us out with whatever else that we need to be able to do. Does that help?
I think so, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, so I heard we will be coming back with more information, and at that point, I think we can revisit the November 3 conversation. Does that work?
Yeah, so we will, the plan that you have that's published right now, comms wanted to be able to do some Scribner's updates to it, grammatical, maybe add some photos and stuff like that, so we wanted to be able to do that. In the Planning Commission, they did recommend some changes and like some edits to be able to add to that. So that's going to be something that council will have to decide. Do you want us to actually implement those changes or not? There are clarifications, points of clarifications, and if we do, then we'll have to communicate with comms to actually get that worked up into the edit. I looked at the council calendar, and there is a business meeting on December 3. Again, what we're trying to do is we're trying to land this plane so that it gets in, so that our, our impact fees can actually move forward, and the general capital facilities plan can also move forward with this integration into it. So by the 28th, there's probably not enough time for us to turn around, unless you guys want to be able to review that. But we could maybe return to a committee of the whole with that presentation so that there's at least maybe a walkthrough on that together before maybe going to a consent agenda.
So I'm going to poll council. Are we good moving forward with the light-touch edits for communications and having that direction? Thumbs, yes?
Yeah.
Great. So that should help us stay on track a bit. And then we'll see you again in the coming weeks with potentially more of that conversation around funding.
Okay.
Or, or see Director Cochrane.
Sounds good.
Sound good?
Yep.
Work for everyone? Fantastic.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Stewart, yes?
Sorry, Deputy Chief Quircony, when you say the Planning Commission suggested edits that you've not included and you're waiting for council direction on which ones to include, is that what I also heard?
Yes, correct. Yeah. The instruction we were given is the Planning Commission makes the recommendations, but whether or not they get folded into the plan is actually to the discretion of council to decide if those actually warrant those inclusion. So they made their recommendations on changes. Again, they identified some clarity in language, one or two sentences here and there. They didn't come up with anything that was substantive in terms of like major recommendations outside of that. But we didn't include that in until council had an opportunity to take a look at that. And so that's in the, the Planning Commission report in the issues matrix. I have actually the verbiage in the section that they...
Totally. So sorry, more information than one was needed. So thank you. In the direction we just gave the council vice president, did we cover all of the outstanding work items?
I don't believe we did.
I think that there's another batch that maybe can be worked on at our, if I may suggest, our November 18 Committee of the Whole for Public Safety.
If we could, if you could bring those, those forward in that public, in that committee of the whole, just those language clarification edits, so we can look at those and address those in that meeting, and then, and then fold that all into one.
Got it. And so then at that point, you will have had an opportunity to speak with Director Cochrane, and then the follow-up on the 28th on the fiscal strategy for the entire general government facilities plan, which includes our stuff in there. And then we can get direction on whether or not we can add it to the consent agenda for the December business meeting. Does that sound like it?
That sounds right if I'm tracking it right.
Yep.
I misspoke. We actually have that committee meeting next week. I don't know if it's possible to...
Get those in there.
To prepare.
How, how many were there in, in the discussion?
The edits from the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
I printed those out.
Are we able to run through them?
We could, if you'd like to do that really quickly. So I have the issues matrix. You guys have it in your Planning Commission report. So on page 2 of the issues matrix, you all need a moment to get to it, those who want to look at it. Okay, so on page 2, we had, in the middle of the page, it was regarding, let's see, I'm going to flip these around, reliance on impact fees and grant volatility. We talked about our diversified funding strategy, and then the recommendation was that the plan is designed to adapt to funding shifts while maintaining long-term delivery goals. And staff said that we could add that recommendation to that language section there. So very easy.
Yeah, these recommendations seemed good in my mind. Councilmember Nueva Camina, I saw you raise your hand.
Thank you. I was just looking for clarification on the page because we've got several documents in there for...
I think it's page 7 of the larger...
Got you. Thank you very much for bringing me up to speed.
Thank you.
These, I mean, I reviewed these, and they seemed adequate. They didn't seem out of the left field, or...
They weren't, no. Like I said, we just have been instructed just to not redline them straight in until you guys had an opportunity to review it. So yeah, there was the one, again, that shows up with Commissioner, Councilmember Stewart on item 3. So it's on the next page. And so that's, that's a go for you all?
So the planning is designed to adapt and, and to funding shifts while maintaining long-term delivery goals is the edit.
Yes, correct. So then...
Thumbs for that addition?
I'm not sure I understand what we're doing yet.
Okay.
We're going through all the...
We're going through that matrix of the Planning Commission.
Yeah. I was reaching to find it, so I'm now sharing it on the screen so the public can follow. follow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, process question. Who did they make the recommendation to?
I believe they made it to you, to the council.
Okay. So it wasn't to you?
It wasn't to us.
That's why you didn't include it.
We had some discussions about that. Glenn's actually got his hand up. Glenn from Planning is, he is online.
Yeah. Go ahead, Glenn.
Oh, hi, everybody. Glenn Coyle, Long Range Plannin'. Yeah, there's just some process questions, it sounds like. Just want to reiterate, you know, this whole fire functional plan is being adopted as a comprehensive plan amendment. So the process for that is that technical committee reviews that. It goes to planning commission. They hold a public hearing and they make a recommendation whether to council to approve or deny this comprehensive plan amendment. So that's really the process here when we talk about the planning commission report and recommendations here. And then you'll note in the planning commission report itself on page three and four, kind of lists the items that the planning commission recommended for the final edit for council adoption. So just wanted to point that out there. It might be a little bit easier to read too, instead of going through the issues matrix. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
So it looks to me like there's only the two suggestions?
No, there's a, there's half a dozen small ones there.
Apologies.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts on these recommendations? Councilmember Fields?
So the recommendation is to council, you've had a chance to review them. Do you have any thoughts or opinions you can share with council on whether they?
I provided what I thought would address their concern, and I provided alternative text that could be used in lieu of it. So that's what's included on that page is you can see what, if you, if you agree that that's a viable thing that should be added or addressed, then I provided what the text could look like.
Got it.
Yeah. So do I, do I think they're out of line? I don't think, I think they're clarifications. And I think that their visibility on something that seems intuitive to me, but they identified it as not, I'm okay with being clear on that and better with that.
Yeah, these, these seem like clarification modifications to me. So I, I'm good moving forward with them. Councilmember Stewart, I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, absolutely. When I read these at the top of the planning commission report, assumed that staff had already integrated them. I think the news was that they hadn't yet been integrated. I support the direction to move forward with integration of all of the planning commission recommendations. Thanks.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just a little backwards from what we normally are used to seeing. So fully happy to go along this ride with you all. But the recommendations appear to be in line with, and making things more clear. And I, I think I'm good with them. Show of thumbs of folks that are good. And then council president Kritzer online? We had full thumbs in the room.
Am I good to speak?
Yes.
Oh, great. Yeah. I'm a thumb on that. Yeah, I think I just wanted to weigh in on the process here, that typically we get a planning commission recommendation. It is integrated and we're able to, or at least we're able to essentially adopt the planning commission's recommendation or make changes to that recommendation. So I think I'm okay with continuing with that typical process of taking the planning commission's recommendations. One very minor edit that I would note to the document is that, which it would only be noticed based on our councils, that the actual council members are listed within the document as well as the planning commission members as well. And it notes the planning commission members, their positions, but it doesn't denote for the council, the president and vice president within the document. So you might add that detail since you have the chair and vice chair of the planning commission.
Copy that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for going on that journey together.
We, at the planning commission meeting, it was a round, because we didn't come in success, like we didn't do this in phases with them to work it out. So we had that conversation. Glenn remembers that with me as well.
And thank you for the context, Mr. Coyle, as well. Fantastic. So we will adopt those changes and we will continue the conversation on funding and see you back in a few weeks. Great?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda is the capital investment program project updates for Q3 2025. Erin Burt, Public Works Director, will introduce the item.
Councilmembers, good evening. Erin Burt, Public Works Director. Great to be here this fine Tuesday evening across the board. Presenting our capital improvement third quarter update. This is the fourth time we've been in front of council as we continue to provide regular quarterly updates. We're going to touch on some specific projects that you talked about, and then also touch a little bit about how we're building the capital improvement program for next year as we go into already the next biennial budget process. I do want to touch base though, before we get into the meat of the presentation. Several council members have approached us and previous at the meeting when we came for a touch base to talk about Evans Creek, the project that we have going on right now. So wanted to provide council with an update, give you a little bit of insight on where we're going. As you know, this project has been around for 10 or 15 years. It's a challenging project of relocating a stream that has the potential for flooding in a flood prone area into an area of the county that is undeveloped with the intent being creating flood plain habitat for salmon and actually also creating a nice walking and trail area for passive recreation for citizens, both in the county and the city of Redmond. One of the challenges that we've gone into that I don't think was realized when this project was conceived was just how tricky a process this would be for permitting between the city going to the county and then also with the feds. About two years ago, we thought we were on the cusp of getting this project permitted with the county and getting ready to take it out to bid. And we were thrown a bit of a curve ball from the county. I think part of that had to do with the fact that with the complications of this project and high turnover of county staff who were working on it, it was seeming that about every three to four months when the county would get ahold of us, we had to teach them what the project was, bring them up to speed once again on all the technical aspects and the things that we had done up until that point. Right now, we are in a situation where we're at a bit of an impasse. We believe that we finally have the clarity needed for us to get the two critical permits from the county, which is the clearing grade permit and the flood permit from the county. Part of the flood permit is tied with the feds through FEMA, but FEMA will issue us a flood plain permit once we get the clearing and grading and flood permit from the county. The issue that came up though, with the county is that because this is a project that is going to be done by the city in county property, the county would like us to enter into a operating and maintenance agreement that basically provides the county with indemnity in perpetuity for anything that may or may not happen with the project. That is normally not the type of agreement that we in the city would want to enter into, basically saying that we will take responsibility for anything natural or unnatural that would happen potentially with this project for generations to come. The county has somewhat dug their heels in on this aspect. And we received a draft O and M agreement from the county about a month, two months ago. We worked it internally, made some perspective changes back to the county. And now we have the city attorney involved, speaking directly with the county attorneys. And we're going to try to get the terms of this or the conditions changed that would probably be a little bit more favorable to the city as a whole. The other issue that comes up with this O and M agreement, if in fact that we have to go through it, the county insists on it, is that the county staff is telling us that it would take six to nine months to get through the county council process for adoption. That is best case scenario, considering that we are just starting the discussions with the attorneys on this right now. If that gets ironed out, maybe sometime in the first or second quarter, we could get that moving or the county could get that moving through their legislative process, which means potential adoption by the end of '26, which means once again, we miss another construction window, which means that's additional cost to the project to get this implemented. If you remember, the original project budget was about $19 million, and those dollars were validated at about 60% design back in 2021. Over the past couple of years, as we've talked about this project, we were assuming some of the cost increases, taking that out of contingency and not looking for a hard dollar increase on this project yet. What we've been able to determine right now, looking at the costs of the projects to the project to finished design, the soft costs with the negotiation, consultants, support, and then finally getting it to a point where maybe we can take it out for bid in 2027, is a potential cost escalation. And these are rough numbers of potentially another $3 million, which would take the Evans Creek project up to over $22 million. Now, that does assume a pretty robust contingency within there. We're looking at a contingency dollars, about three and a half, about 3 million. But it's real costs that we have to consider. I know Councilmember Stewart was making the point earlier on the fire facilities plan, you know, what are you looking at for costs? What are you trying to shoo in? And the question often comes up, especially by Councilmember Fields, is if we increase the cost of one project, what are we taking away from? I can't tell you that right now. I can tell you that in many of our projects that we have in the capital improvement program, we are at an underspend component. So there is capacity within the budget to probably assume this cost. We have to do some additional financial analysis. But this is really coming down to a question from the council's standpoint as well, is is the juice worth the squeeze on this project? Today, we've expended about $5 million roughly on this project out of an original project budget of $19 million. And I have not turned a single spade of dirt or made any improvements on this area. That is staff cost, that is consultants, that's design, that's redesign, that's the county charging us, hundreds of thousands of dollars for permits that they have not delivered on, that's right of way that we've paid for on the properties out there, that's lawyers to negotiate right of way easements and agreements. But we have not saved any salmon. We haven't created any new habitat. And we are years away from seeing this project come to fruition. So with that, with all that great news, I don't have anything better to say on this at this time, save for the fact that as we get further clarity from where the county is thinking about this O and M agreement, and whether or not we can get some leverage or traction to maybe reshape that to be a little bit more favorable for the city's perspective, we're just kind of in a holding pattern right now. Would love to get some insight, take any of the questions that you may have, or even get some initial feedback or thoughts on whether or not the council feels that this is a viable project to, for us to continue.
Thank you for the real talk of where this project lies and the situation at hand. I think one burning question that I know I have, and I'm sure others do, there was a federal grant that we were looking at expiring soon. What's the status of that?
I think there's some flood district grants. There is no federal grant on this project, thankfully.
There has been some state money, but we're not at the point of.
We did, we did have a deadline looming of running the risk of missing out on that funding.
Yeah. National Resources is actually reaching out to see if we can get an extension on those.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Noiva Kamina?
Thank you. And that was the state money that I was going to ask. And we heard from Amy Tsai earlier about the state legislative priorities and one of them, of course, being all about salmon. And this, this project is directly aligned with the state direction and what we want to achieve. The state wants it, we want it. It seems like the county is the one in the middle. And how do we get that past that? And I don't have the answers externally, just exploring this. I vaguely recall the last time that, that we saw this before council, that the mayor was going to see if she was able to have any conversations to further this.
Yes. I've had extensive conversations with Mayor Bernie about this. She is in direct discussions or conversations with Executive Braddock there at the council, excuse me, at the county, to see about if there's a way for us to, to work this, this process. We have also had extensive department to agency discussions at my level, down through the staff level as well. I do want to mention one wrinkle about this. It's not that the county doesn't believe that this is a good project, you know, because they do these types of projects. But the county does these types of projects with the county. They don't, they haven't done this with a partner agency before, especially where we, as the partner, are saying, we want to develop part of this project that starts in Redmond and moves into the county. The challenges that we're finding is that the permitting agency doesn't know how to permit a partner to do this type of work. And they're applying development standards that would be more apt to us coming in and building a development and not doing a environmental restoration program. And so that took us actually a long time to get to that point where almost in essence, that's what they admitted to, that they are having a hard time on their side of the house. And Councilmember Fields chuckling because I know he used to work for the county, and so do I, so did I. And I'm pulling my hair out on this, as you can see, right? Because the answer and that partnership component is right there for us. It's, it's not filtering through to the action component that we need.
Council President Kritzer and then Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work from you, Director Burt and our staff and Mayor Bernie. And I know I've had a couple of conversations with folks at the county about this and heard from, from folks there that they do want to see this move forward. It does seem like it is really challenging. And this, as you all mentioned, it was funded by RIAT8, which the staff that run that are at the county. And so it doesn't make a lot of sense why it's been so hard to be able to do this, but I can understand the challenges. I will say, before we move to any sort of change or like adjustment for the plan, I think that we should, that we would want to have like a dedicated study session just to this issue. And I think we also will want to look at some of the different assumptions. So for example, the assumption that it would take as long as is estimated to be able to get onto the King County Council's schedule. I think that is something that we could talk about and be able to brainstorm, at least from the political side, on what we might be able to do in regards to that. So, so I would just caution us before we make any rapid changes to be able to really think through it. But I do appreciate you giving us the update. And maybe it would make sense for us to schedule some special time to talk about this and get in some written materials before we see this again.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields and then Councilmember Stewart.
So two things, based on everything you've said, given the fact that you understand the organization there, you understand the barriers, the things that are happening. I wouldn't even, even remotely supposed to tell you how to solve that problem. I think your bigger question to us as council was, is it worth the benefits? Is it worth, worth the value if in fact this project becomes a $22 or $24 million endeavor? Is that, I mean, I heard you ask that question. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, right now, we're looking at over $22 million, but I can't say that that's a hard number yet.
Right. And with lawyers involved, who knows?
Exactly.
So I think that the council, that's really. So I think that the council, that's really what this group of people should be focused on because, you know, Mayor Bernie is doing her best, you're doing your best. It's a growth opportunity for the county, it sounds like, and they're not accepting that growth opportunity. They can expand their horizons right now by saying, oh, here's something new that we can do for the public. We could do that. That would be a nice epiphany. And I don't know who has the skill to, to, to do that, to give them that epiphany. But I think that, and I think I just heard Council President say almost the same thing, is that we, we need a session to evaluate how important, if this project is important enough, to move forward with the higher costs.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, and we definitely, see if we get some study session time. I know it's pretty tight here through the rest of the year or potentially in the first quarter. We can take you back to square one, we can talk about original assumptions, the functions and values that were to be derived from this project, and then what we anticipate to be the long-term potential impact for sure.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I agree with the overall direction of finding some time to study the issue a bit more in the materials ahead of such a conversation. I think it would be helpful, I actually really like the language that you used, Director Byrd, it'd be helpful to have the kind of original intended impact and also commitments that we made to partners such as RIAT8. I know that our council president is very well aware of it because of her role in regional boards and committees, but this project predates most of us here on the council, and so having a chance to start fresh on that and reevaluate the impact. I, I think it's also worth acknowledging the existing investment that we have made to, to this point also. So I look forward to the next conversation. Thanks for the update.
Any other questions on this part of the conversation? All right.
Great with that. I'll turn it over to my two partners here up at the table, Steve Gibbs, the Capital Program Manager, and Tess Wilkinson, who's our capital planner. They will take you through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Director Byrd. That's the one less project we have to update. So I'm here with Tess Wilkinson, Senior Principal Planner. She's put together all of this materials and take it away, Tess.
All right, thank you. So we will skip right over the Evans Creek slide when we get to it. All right, so this is the capital division stats for the year. We have remained very steady over the year with 30 active projects each month. Our goal for substantial completion has been revised down to 15. There are three projects that we expect will slide into 2026 for substantial completion, and those are the 70th Street Shared Use Path and Crosswalk, the sidewalk repairs on Avondale Way, and the Bellred buffered bike lanes, which we will talk about a little bit more later in this presentation. So here is our table of completed and soon-to-be completed projects. Thank you very much. We are very excited about these projects, and you'll see the two at the bottom, the buffered bike lanes and the sidewalks that did slip out to April. And at council's request, we added you some beauty shots of our completed projects this year. Keep in mind that this is our construction inspectors out there taking the shot, so I tried to pick the best of the best that didn't include shots of holes in the ground and the products that we were using to fill them. So on this slide, we have the Avondale Road Erosion Control Project that was completed in March, the control and telemetry upgrades, Phases Two and Three, completed in May, the 40th Street Sidewalk Repairs Project, also completed in May. And on this next slide, we have our PPE Management Storage and Extraction Project that was at five different fire facilities around the city that was completed in April. And then our two most recently completed projects, the pavement on West Lake Sammamish Parkway and everybody's favorite, the Redmond Central Connector Phase Three. Thank you all for the wonderful opening ceremony for that. Moving into our projects and program reporting. This is our general government report. Our general government portfolio has been very active this year. The LED lighting within the building retrofit has been completed in City Hall, and our two ESCO projects are moving along fairly quickly. When we met with you during our last program report in July, I promised that I would bring you more information on CIP projects that are run outside of the capital division. And so our next slide here is those, some of the general government facilities projects that are being run outside of our division. In April, I know that you received some information on the Energy Smart Eastside Program. Jenny Leibek very kindly sent me some updates to that, so I have some updated numbers to share with you. This year's heat pump installations include 19 full-cost coverage installations for low-income community members and six grant-funded installations for adult family homes around Redmond. And so the 40 heat pumps that have been installed so far this year in 2025 bring our total up to 111 in this program. And I know we talked about it a little bit earlier with fire, but today, this quarter's featured project is the MOC Campus Redevelopment, and Steve will give you some updates on that.
Yeah, thank you, Tess. So the, the big, the big accomplishment this, this past quarter was we, we selected, selected our team and we really feel like we've selected the right team. We're calling them LMS, so the L is for Lewis, Lee's Crusher Lewis, our contractor, and the M is Miller Hall, the architect, and then STANTEC is the, the primary civil for designing the MOC. Currently, the, the validation phase is underway, and they're looking at the space and program needs that were kind of developed in the master plan and trying to validate those and includes a reasonable growth projection to make sure the size of the facility is, is what we need. We're also reviewing dispersed operations for when we start, construction starts approaching in roughly a year and a half. And then they're also building the rest of the design-build team, and so they've been requesting proposals from, they, they don't call them subcontractors, they call them subpartners because they are design builders themselves. And so they've recently selected KPFF as the structural and the civil subpartner, and then they're currently reviewing the mechanic and electrical and plumbing subpartners and hope to have those selected soon and get the, get the team kind of finalized. And so that's kind of the progress that we've had this past quarter.
I do want to call out one point about the MOC. So when we talk about validation, as Steve mentioned, it is taking a look at what our original assumptions were in the master plan and adding in these different components that we believe that have either come to light after the master plan was done or have been identified through the validation process. Once that validation process gets done, that's our first stop sign to take a look at really what we want to achieve, if it's going to be feasible at the site and under the, the current budget that we have proposed. It gives us that, that stopping point for us to be able to come together as the owner with our design-build team to say, okay, some of our assumptions are very high and we need to adjust those, or we're missing something, or hey, there's no way we're going to be able to build what we want to build with the budget that we have. So we need to begin to start making some choices of size, programmatic aspects, cutting out components, but it's that first real checkpoint that gives us that aspect of validity, whether or not we're on azimuth or not with what our original assumptions are. And when we get to that point, that's a, as we presented previously, that's a natural check-in point that we'll come back to council, give you an update on that, let you know what we're thinking and receive any guidance from you at that time.
Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, so I'm not quite sure why I was driving back from California and MOC sort of tapped into my brain as I'm driving along. And what occurred to me was, you, you just described actually what I was thinking about is this whole decision-making-as-you-go process. And staging, keep, you know, keeping it operational as we complete this project has to be really complex. And I'm, what occurred to me is somebody from, some buddies from the operating side as part of that decision-making or technical team, do you, is that something that you're doing to make sure that we can actually function during the...
Yeah, 100%. As Steve mentioned, one of this aspect is looking at dispersed operations. What would it look like under four different scenarios of keeping the facility operating on-site, moving everybody off? And what does that look like if we moved everybody off to provide a clear site? So stash people here in City Hall, where do we put the vehicles? Where do you put spoils, you know, from the decant? Where do you put your salt for the winter? Where does parks park their mowers, right? So that, that's all part of the validation process. And then also part of the validation process is the team coming back to us with that recommendation of maybe what the best way to approach, once we get into construction, is going to be. Because if we go into full dispersed operations and move offsite, there's going to be a cost. The direction that we have and the direction that's been given to the team is maximize city-owned properties and space first. And with that, kind of one of the mantras that we put out and we're talking about is staff are going to need, need to be comfortable being uncomfortable for about a two-year period of time. We will not have an ideal situation where everybody's going to be able to move, you know, to the Costco parking lot where there's a ton of space and set up operations there. We're, we're going to have to figure out that puzzle piece, and it's going to, it's going to be a challenge.
So, and I get that, and I think my question was, are you adding those other voices?
Yes.
I think in terms of like, you know, doctors, ones that's focused on, should we amputate that leg, but the other one is concerned about the mental health of the patient.
So how this, how we're, how we're set up, we have a project management team, and think of those as the designers, all the people that we have under contract, and then it's the, the core group that we have from Parks, Public Works, and Facilities that are providing that, which you would say almost like that day-to-day advisement or insight into the project, providing that voice on the ground. From there, we have the SMT or the subject matter team, so a little bit higher up on the pay scale and authorities that can provide that oversight. And then from there, we have the executive team, which is myself, Director Helen, Director Cochran, Director Hamilton, and CEO O'File. So we're like the final say. The beauty about progressive design-build is that the majority of the decisions are being made at that PMT and that's SMT level, because you've given them the authority and have set the boundaries for these are the decisions you should be making and you will make, and elevate these up higher when it's needed. So most of that stuff is with that frontline group. Yep.
All right, carrying on, thank you.
All right, moving on to our Parks portfolio. These are the Parks projects that are currently being managed by the Capital Construction Division. The progress in this portfolio that we've been able to make has allowed us to begin design on the Southeast Redmond Park two years ahead of schedule, and that Southeast Redmond Park is going to be our featured project for this quarter. But first, we're going to talk about the Parks projects, sorry, Steve, Parks projects that are being managed by the Parks team. So in addition to the four projects that I've shared on this slide, they also have two upcoming projects that should begin soon, those being the, the Dog Park Installation and the Parks Facilities Painting Projects. All right, and now, here to tell us a little bit more about a very exciting upcoming project is the Southeast Redmond Park. Steve.
Yes, yes, excited for sure. Both the Parks and Capitol teams are excited to get this one started. The scope on this project has, you know, walking trails, new playgrounds, pickleball, and a hill to watch the sunset. Design is scheduled to begin first quarter of '26. Design's going to follow the preferred option that was identified in the Southeast Redmond Park Master Plan. The RFQ is currently out, and we're expecting submittals back October 22nd. And as you may recall, in the master plan effort, there was a lot of public comment around the, the noise of the pickleball courts, and so they are going to bring in a consultant and study the noise and see if there's anything that we could do in the, in the construction to mitigate some of the noise impacts.
All right, thank you. So traffic operations is about much more than paving, despite what you see on the list of projects here. There is extensive utility work that is often done with some of our paving projects, including our upcoming 24th Street paving project that's going to begin this winter with final paving to take place in 2027. Our traffic operations team shared with me this list of projects, CIP projects that they are running. This, these projects include the adaptive signals. Downtown is now running, those signals are running adaptively, and the first review of the system verification plan has been completed, and they are expecting substantial completion for the entire project amid November of 2025. Also on their active list is the accessible pedestrian system. This project upgrades existing push buttons to be APS button, push buttons. Those are at 10 locations, signalize intersections within downtown and Overlake. And the final project they wanted me to bring to you was the pedestrian safety signs for signals. This project is, includes 10 no-turn-on-red signs at priority locations throughout the city, and then also they'll be installing 10 LED enhanced pedestrian walking signs around the downtown core, so really focusing on our pet and bike safety for our residents. Our featured traffic operations safety project this quarter is the pavement management on 154th. This project is partially funded by an FHWA grant and is expected to be completed next year.
Yeah, on this project, we got, we had to get started early with the federal process. There's definitely some extra steps involved. The initial design efforts came in with a cost estimate that was slightly higher than budget, and that's mainly due to a recommendation to do a three-inch grind and overlay, opposed to where we normally would do a two-inch grind and overlay. Early in design, we took several pavement cores. You can even see in the photo there the cracking. I mean, if you had it up close, it would be even more dramatic, but the cores revealed the cracking going as, as deep as three inches, and so that's why we recommended the, the three-inch, we call it a mill and fill out in, out on the job, but, so that one's just running a little bit over budget right now.
All right, and on the other side of our transportation coin, transportation planning. They have a diverse set of projects from sidewalk repairs to bike lanes and shared use paths. Construction work on the Bellred buffered bike lanes is underway. The sidewalk repairs on 166 has been completed, that was done by our very own concrete crew. And the repairs on, the sidewalk repairs on Avondale Way are going to begin this month. So the construction division does manage all of the transportation planning projects at this time, so I don't have a secondary table to share with you. Instead, we're going to go ahead and move right on into the Bellred buffered bike lanes, which at council request is our featured project this quarter.
Yes, so on this one, the utility work is, is finally underway. The picture up on the, the slide there is, is, is a great capture of what we're experiencing out in the field. So we're, we're currently installing and upgrading some of the stormlines, and really, we're having a little bit of delays. having a little bit of delays due to port locates for some of the existing utilities. And so they're have to do, they're doing careful digging and actually excavating some of this with a vector. And so the progress is slow, but we are getting through. They are going to weave a pipe into that trench, believe it or not, and avoid all those utilities. We did have a gas strike as well, was not 10-foot off on the locate on that. And so what we're finding is that some of the historical records from the utilities are just not very good. And when they go out and market, they're going off of those old records and we're finding their utilities just aren't where they thought they were. And so anyway, the team's doing a great job of getting that stuff through. The extra costs are pretty minimal at this point.
So utilities continues to be our largest portfolio of projects in the CIP. And as mentioned in our last quarterly report, several of our stormwater projects have been put on hold for reevaluation. I thought I would share with you at this time that the project team has reached out to stormwater engineering as well as the maintenance and operations crew members. They have met multiple times to discuss each project individually and then the program has a hall. Those discussions have come up with a plan to move everything forward. It has recently gotten Director Burt's blessing and will go through our internal CIP Governance Committee for review. I expect some of these projects to be re-scoped and re-added into the next, the upcoming So utilities does manage several projects on their own outside of the capital division. The one red project standing that you see up there, it is the South Reservoir Tank. This project has experienced some schedule delays as well as some budget issues. The water tank is jointly owned by Kirkland, Bellevue and Redmond. This project is being run and led by Kirkland. They began design on it just this last month. They expect to be able to advertise it in January of 2027 with construction starting in April of that year and finishing up the work in 2029. So as I said, we'll skip right on past Evans Creek here and we'll move on to another council request. This one is the lift station equipment upgrades phase two.
Yeah, so this is another one, a yellow and a red on this one. Primarily the funding budget issues are, have to do with the very large pumps out in the Novelty Hill Trilogy area, which is really some of the largest pumps we have in the city. The higher costs are associated with upsizing the pumps and the motors. When we did the original estimate, we assumed that we could reuse the existing flywheels on the existing pumps and that turned out to be not the case. And then, and then finally, we had to add some cutters to the pump system. And that's really to mitigate increasing frequency of clogging in our sewer system in the pumps by, you know, rags and, I don't know, the disposable wipes, getting in there and actually clogging the pumps and they have to actually shut down the pumps, disassemble and pull out the rags and then reassemble. And so with the cutters, it will just kind of chew those up and put it through the system. And so it's really going to eliminate a lot of downtime and maintenance time for the crews to not have to do those tasks. So it's kind of a new, new technology that we're trying to address with the cutters. So the good news is we recently opened the bids on this and with the current climate, the bids came in at 900K under the engineer's estimate and which really reduced that extra cost need. So you will see this hopefully for award contract on the November 18th.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Question for the cutters, I know, I've referenced this a lot when we're talking with fire and how to, how to reside in Redmond 101 course that, because we've got such a large influx of new residents that we're welcoming and things that they may not know because of course, marketing, as you said, they're quote flushable wipes when in fact they really aren't. As we're going to be increasing our population and welcoming even more people to Redmond, are we thinking about our projected growth rates and how that is unless we do a significant education piece of, you know, residing in Redmond 101? How, is that being factored in? Because this is going to continue to be a problem as we move forward and as we grow.
Yeah, I'll answer that. This is actually a great application of where we want to bring asset management, our asset performance management into play. So when we are talking about asset performance management, we are looking at systems at a whole and identifying risk. What are the factors that are going to happen now and into the future that are going to impact the lifespan of our assets, right? So that's a risk component, right, that is impacting our system. We factor that into our maintenance projections and our long-term planning components. And then we make that determination of are we going to allocate resources now to get ahead and mitigate that risk long-term? Or do we accept the status quo and become reactive, right? So it's a, it's an emerging issue. This was a situation where we weren't, when this project came to be, we weren't in the process of applying asset management principles, you know, to how we looked at it. This was more on-the-ground, hey, look, we're getting tired of unclogging rags and flushable wipes. What's a solution that we can do? So now we have identified a aspect that we can build into our long-term capital plan and maintenance programs to mitigate this type of risk. And any improvements that we have in our lift station systems going forward, the cutters will be a part of that solution. So yes, I mean, I would love it that when somebody moved into Redmond or moved into an apartment, they also got a pamphlet or something that said, don't flush these wipes down the drain because this is what could happen, right? But a nice picture of a flushable wipe clog, right? I don't know, something. But, but we can, the other thing too on the education component is, these are some of the things that we are thinking about in public works about our build, operate and maintain the city's critical infrastructure. What can we do through our messaging, through social media or outreach efforts also to push these types of messages?
Great, thank you, Director.
Following up on that question, I think these, these things are called fatbergs, if I recall, that's what the flushable wipe clog is called. We, this is phase two of this project and we, I mean, my entire time on council, we've been going through with phase one. What concerns do we have for those phase one projects for the same exact problem?
In talking with the operations folks, it's, it's, you know, we don't see this problem holistically across the city, it's just in certain areas. And so this was, we were working on this area anyway and then the maintenance crew said, hey, we're having this problem, can we do this? And so that's when we started talking about that. We don't see it everywhere right now.
Great, thank you. A great topic for our communications team to maybe put some social media posts out about. Councilmember Fields.
So I don't know anything about waste and all that, but the cutters imply they're cutting up something that really shouldn't have been put there in the first place and then sending them on their merry way when they shouldn't be there. Did you look at other things like filters and extracted? Is that anywhere in the possible, realm of possibility?
The filters would have kind of the same maintenance issue. You'd have to have somebody assigned to go out periodically and, you know, and stop the pump and clean that out. And so I think this is the best solution for this problem and hopefully the usage will diminish as well. But definitely this, this was what the crews felt was the best solution for this situation.
So here is a summary of all the pedestrian and bicycle safety projects that are in our current CIP. The project manager for the pet and bike safety project on 164th, 104th and at East Lake Samamish recently had a productive meeting with King County, thought I would give you some King County good news, about building a connection to the East Lake Samamish Trail as part of that project. So residents will soon be able to get to that trail much easier. So our capital division summary is upcoming. And this is a list of all of the milestones that we expect to achieve in the upcoming quarter, including that award that Steve mentioned of the lift station equipment upgrades phase two, as well as the 24th Street paving. So as Deputy Director Garcia mentioned when we met with you last week, I wanted to take this opportunity to give you some information on updates to our CIP project scoring process. As you are probably well aware, the CIP will begin, the process will begin very soon for the upcoming budget process. We are continually looking to improve our CIP process and one of those improvements that we chose to tackle this time around is to our project scoring. These new scoring criteria are aligned with the city's budgeting priorities, as you can see there, and offer each functional area a broader opportunity to show how their project serves Redmond and why it should be funded at this time. Because each department and division within it serves a unique function within the city, we work very closely with each functional area individually to develop their own imperative spectrum within each of those categories. And in plain language, what that means is within each category, we ask them, for example, the wastewater division, to define an essential or a high priority project from an important or a medium priority project and what is a desirable or nice-to-have-low priority project? What does that look like for you in each of these categories? So letting each group define their own priority standards ensures that their project selections align with their functional area system plans and their own mission within the city. So for example, within the system integrity category, we're asking teams to review their projects and to answer the following questions. Does this project remedy a substantial asset condition, extend or reset the asset's useful life, protect or enhance the level of service that they provide to the community? And so you'll see individual answers from each of them. This is how parks decided to define what an essential or a high priority project within that category means to them. So projects in this rating level significantly improve the condition of the park or a specified part of it and returns it to the level of service the facility is expected to provide the community. The project pertains to a rare or unique asset within the park system or as part of the city. For example, and then another option for essential categories in this would be that the project addresses an identified gap within the system. For example, the Southeast Redmond Park identifies an existing gap. Our traffic operations group defines essential and high priority projects within this category as the asset condition is low and the system is no longer functioning. Projects in this category are likely to be in high priority locations with a PCI score equal to or less than 50. So as you can see that each group addresses the core questions that we ask them within the categories from their own unique view. Traffic operations has PCI data and that strengthens the, their reasoning behind their scoring within the categories. And I expect that with each budget cycle and with the adoption of asset management practices, along with data collection across the city, the defining characteristics for high, medium and low priority projects will be evolving and will become much more data-driven. Really excited for these upcoming changes. So is it this point that I get to say thank you and ask you if there are any follow-up questions?
Do want to add one thing. And thank you Tess and Steve for that information. Councilmembers, I don't know if you remember a project that we had up on Northeast 124th and 172nd, there's a gate up at the north edge of the city. As you're, as you're aware and with the considerable public enthusiasm for and against that project, that came forth in front of council. City was prepared to move forward with some traffic mitigation and remove that gate. We were, the city was sued by some plaintiffs up there from the county. We went to Superior Court on this project and this week we received a judgment in which the case was thrown out with prejudice. So right now, we're in a 30-day holding period that the plaintiffs have the ability to appeal that judgment. But internally, what we're doing is we'll be leaning forward and preparing a implementation plan for that project. And as a reminder, what we've done and what we've committed to that community up there is that the city will pay for some traffic calming measures north of the city line up in the county. And then it would also entail removing the fire gate that's in place, putting a traffic circle, traffic, small roundabout there at Northeast 124th and 172nd, and then opening that corridor for the residents of North Redmond. So as that progresses and we have some communication that we plan on taking out to the community once we have the green light and know that there's not going to be an appeal, we'll definitely let the council know on our further actions on that. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you for that update. I know we've all been wondering what's going on with that, so appreciate the update there.
Yes, gate, gate.
Gate, gate. Any other questions for our staff on the CIP update? Councilmember Stewart.
Well, first, thank you so much for this conversation this evening. I find these super, super helpful. On the update related to the gate issue, could we get a little bit in writing, a brief memo on who is paying for what in response to the news that you just shared, Director Burt? If we could get that in writing in case we are getting, there is a lot of public interest in this and we, the council, may get questions and I would just love to have it all correct in my correspondence.
Absolutely, we're paying for it, the city is. But I'll get you a budget breakdown if you, if that works for you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. The question I wanted to ask, I really appreciated the conversation Tess on the updated scoring project categories. And the council actually, on November 12th, we have a study session with Director Cochran and one of the topics we're going to be working on is the outcome map of the priority areas for the budget. So could you, to the extent that this has already been discussed, could you tell us a little bit about how the updated scoring categories may or may not impact the outcomes that are listed on the outcomes maps? Is it likely that the measures in and of themselves may need to be updated or how are those two things being crosswalked with one another?
At this time, I'm not really sure how best to answer that. I haven't had a conversation with the Director Cochran on those outcome maps, but I will reach out to her and see how we can integrate it better. I do say, want to let you know that every time that we go through a CIP process, we do have our functional areas add their projects onto a GIS map so that the whole team can see any upcoming projects and we're better able to integrate our projects together and work in partnership. That is how a lot of these paving projects with utility work came about so that we minimize our disruption to the cities. Yeah, and then we're just looking to be sure that we are not impacting particular areas of the city overly much, that we do try and spread, spread the pain around, I guess you could say.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for all the wonderful information and updates and this was very fruitful conversation and lots to take in, so appreciate all the, all the info. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is council talk time. We do have one item on the agenda which was, I was the prime sponsor on, gosh, back in, I want to say March. We did get, I did get an update from a staff review, so I would like to put this on pause so that the cosponsors and I can actually review the staff review of this new direction. So I apologize that the timing didn't work out and that, that we need to kind of take a beat on that one. Councilmember Anderson, yes?
I did want an opportunity to discuss it, but I understand if we talk about it now, then you guys can't work on it.
I think we can.
Can I add questions since we've seen it?
Sure.
Okay, there's, since this is based on Senate Bill 6278.
Obviously, yeah.
I was wondering if you had a chance to look at the proposed amendments to that bill because- because the bill didn't go all the way through anyway. There was one that was adopted, and then there were about six that weren't. So my questions would be in terms of transferring, basically, this is for new wells. And my comment would be, have we considered abandonment, transfer of ownership, and transfer or change of ownership for the water rights and then, or groundwater rights in part of that, part of our city legislation, if you wouldn't mind looking at some of those proposals, because it was just defining the terms.
Absolutely. Could you email those to Deidre so that we can fold that into the conversation that we're going to have with staff on the new information that I received back from them?
Great. I'm happy to do that. And then I think the other comment I just wanted to add to that was the, they do include certain definitions. And I have a suspicion that in our local city limits, we will have different needs than the state would for considering it. So just encourage the revisit of those amendments and if they are appropriate to our context or not.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, there was a lot of back and forth between myself, our city attorney, and a water attorney expert. And that's where we landed on what you see before you. But we had a snag in the process where staff did not see that update. So they had a chance to review it, and they had some revisions as well. So I think your comments tonight in conjunction with the staff revisions and staff suggestions would go a long way in getting us further along this conversation.
So just to Deidre, or would you like that to the whole council at the moment?
I think just to Deidre for now, so that we keep things.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Any other items for council talk time? I know we wanted to circle back on SCA boards and commissions. And if anyone was looking at applying for any of the upcoming openings on SCA boards and commissions, I think that, I'm seeing two different dates. Maybe Councilmember Stewart, you have a little more insight. I see a 10:30 deadline and a 11:07 deadline in two different emails. So I'm not sure which is accurate.
It's the one after November 4th, is my understanding.
That's a, that's a good date. Okay. So the date for submission is November 7th. And just as a reminder, if anyone is interested in applying for one of these open positions, we can only have one person from the city apply. Otherwise, if there are two people that apply, both applications get thrown out. So if you are interested, please speak now or forever hold your peace. All right. I'm not seeing anyone. So Councilmember Stewart, go ahead.
Yeah, as I've previously shared, I have reapplied for my seat on the Growth Management Planning Council, and wanted to update the council that I actually was appointed to the pick nominating committee. So can't wait to see Team Redmond's applications.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Stewart gave us an update during our last meeting briefly. But I think just in the context of this conversation, can you remind us about where we're at in terms of the Growth Management Planning Council or Board? I can't remember which one is thinking about a change in its structure. If you can give us that update, that'd be helpful, just so everyone's aware.
Sure. So that is both of the PSRC Policy Board, so the Growth Management Planning Board and the Transportation Policy Board. The current recommendation is that Redmond would receive permanent seats on both of those boards, separate from the SCA process.
And can you remind us when that decision will be made? Well, if you knew before, we would need to apply for an SCA seat on one of those boards?
You know, how about this? I will touch base with SCA staff and report back to the council via email. This is an evolving issue, and I haven't had an update in the last, you know, since the weekend. So I'm happy to update. But my understanding is that those permanent seats then would effectively become mayoral appointments.
I was going to chime in and say the same thing. Those positions tend to be mayoral appointments, so those wouldn't happen until likely January anyway. Go ahead, Vanessa. Sorry, Council President Kritzer.
Yeah, I'll just follow up on that. Just to say, my point was just if it turns out that we don't end up getting those converted, which I understand would be mayoral appointments, I wouldn't want us to miss out, because I think we've been really well-served by Councilmember Stewart's representation on those, on the planning board and the council. So I do think if we can get the updates and if those applications, would be good to look at that. But otherwise, yeah, hopefully, we'll end up getting, we'll have that opportunity as more of a mayoral appointment.
Okay. Thank you. We will stay tuned for an update if there is one available. Any other comments on SCA? Council President Kritzer, is your hand up again?
Yes, it is. Apologies. This is separate from this application process, but I did want to let others on the council know that after this year, I am, or at the end of this year, there's going to be elections for the SCA, for the North Caucus seats on the SCA Board. I've decided to open the seat that I've been serving in for someone else to step in. So if someone else from our council wanted to run for that seat, would be happy to give insight on my experience there and be able to support you in doing so. I think there will also likely be another vacancy in the North Caucus as well. So there'll likely be a couple of different folks representing our area that will have the opportunity to be able to join the SCA Board. And I've appreciated the experience. Unfortunately, with the scheduling and timing, I've decided to make it an opportunity available to others.
Great. Thank you for your service on that, and thank you for giving us the heads up. So we have a little bit of time to consider, since these don't happen until November 7th. But if you are considering one of those positions, please bring up at a future meeting that you are considering it, so that we don't inadvertently have two people apply for the same spot. All right. Next on my list for council talk time, just need to do a quorum check for our November 18th meeting. There are many of us that are traveling for council purposes, for conferences. So if you are available to be here, please, can you just indicate? Okay. Okay. Great. I think we should be good. There are several of us, myself included, that will be attending online, because we will be attending a conference. But just wanted to make sure we would have enough folks in person. I saw thumbs up from Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Leva Camina, Councilmember Stewart, Council President Kritzer. Is that a thumbs up or a hand for a question?
It's just a hand for a question.
Okay. All right. So we look like we will have a quorum. So thank you all for that. Council President Kritzer, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to get the clarity. I gave a thumbs up that I could join the meeting. I will be at the National League of Cities Conference, so would be joining virtually on that date. But I did want to make sure, because I think we were discussing whether we'd be, have enough councilmembers to have the in-person meeting. But just wanted to confirm, everyone else who gave the thumbs up is able to do the in-person, correct?
I'm seeing head nods.
I'm seeing nods on my little.
Yes. So a little background on that one. We were considering making that a virtual meeting, but there is a potential big decision that night. And I would think that would not be a great meeting to have a virtual-only meeting. So council leadership will take that back to the mayor and continue to have that conversation and make sure that, since we now know there will be enough folks in the room, that we can have that meeting as intended. Councilmember Fields?
Is that in our rules and procedures that there has to be for in the room?
No, it was just for process, to make sure the meeting ran smoothly. I think there was a thought of potentially moving it online, since three of us are going to be online, including the mayor. And so it's, council leadership and the mayor are all going to be remote. So as you know, it gets a little, it gets a little wonky when we run remote.
What date is that?
November 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for council talk time? Councilmember Stewart?
Did you have your hand up? Okay. I look forward to hearing who's going to run the meeting on the 18th. It's an important meeting. Okay. Actually, I just have one, and it kind of marries two topics together. Earlier in the year, actually, in last year, but this year, the council, we did have an opportunity to meet with the Lake Washington School Board. That was a result of a Hopper item in order to further our relationship with the school board. The intent had been, at the end of that meeting, that there would be collectively and possibly even quarterly meetings. That has not happened, as we all know. But everyone has the best of intentions. So as I walked away from our council conversation in Astera Park, this is where I marry kind of the two conversations. I think it's time in 2026 that we go to Education Hill. We've been really deliberate about going, seeking out other neighborhoods and visiting other neighborhoods first. I think it's time to go to Education Hill. And I would offer to the council, perhaps this is another opportunity, say, you know, March, they're going to have new board members over there. Maybe in March, we could possibly hold one of our council conversations in a school up on the hill and do it jointly, and offer folks a chance to come and meet with whoever they need to meet with. And sometimes folks don't know which of these two entities they need to meet with. So just wanted to kind of plant that seed and maybe get a little feedback as we go along. But would be interested in, of course, continuing on our quarterly conversations, because they're a blast. Thank you.
Yeah. Back in the day, we did used to do council conversations and council forums in schools. So bring those back pre-COVID. Council President Kritzer?
Yeah, I would just weigh in on that, that I think that's a great idea, especially because council leadership has been talking about, as we kind of look at any scheduling for the going forward, that we likely will end up with the council conversation in March. And so I think that, you know, and that's going to be likely the, an indoor meeting, given that it's in the wintertime. So I think that's a great idea. I would probably revise, but I don't think we've intentionally not gone to Education Hill, but more that we just haven't gone to Education Hill yet, since we have started council conversations. I'm excited about the opportunity to go to Education Hill. And I think there could be a great opportunity with the idea that Councilmember Stewart brought up, to maybe be able to do specific outreach to the PTAs at some of the schools nearby, to be able to engage some of the local residents there, and especially some of the leaders within the parent community. And so appreciate that idea. And then I have one other item for council talk time, when you're ready, Council President.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to remind the council, as we do planning ahead for November, that the first meeting in November is going to be on a Monday because of Election Day on a Tuesday. And so just a reminder about that. And then that the next week, we're going to have our meeting on Wednesday. And that's because of Veterans Day, and the state law is very specific about which day we have to choose if our meeting falls on a national holiday, so that it has to be on Wednesday. So anyway, I just wanted everyone to make sure that you've marked your calendar, as we're talking about things like quorum as well, to be there on those special meeting days as well. And because especially, that one on the Wednesday will also include some deep conversations on some important topics. So thanks.
Yes. Thank you for flagging that November is a bit odd, and Monday meeting, a Wednesday meeting, and then many councilmembers out for a meeting, or remote for a meeting. So it's going to be an interesting November. Any other items for council talk time? All right. Seeing none. We've reached the end of our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.